To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
All right Wyatt?
Here.
Engel?
Here.
Reister?
Here.
Funs?
Present.
Stabell?
Here.
Before we get to the public hearing, let me explain what it is because in case there's a lot of confusion. I presume most of you are here because of notification for setting up a commercial urban revitalization area. What was done back in about 1993 was most of Hudson was put into a TIF district. What that was intended for was predominantly residential areas. What it did was intercept the taxes such as off the Glenwood Chase addition, the new addition that started in 93. So we could pull all the tax funds and that ended up doing the streetscape, improving all the downtown streets. Since that point in time, other areas such as the Upper Ridges residential development, as well as developments down through here, through the Whitetail, through some of the condo units, were in a TIF district where that could be used either for rebates to developers or it could be used for putting in infrastructure such as streets. Glenwood Chase was all done by the developer, there was no subsidies to that one, but that was the start of it. The whole thing about a TIF district, tax increment financing, is you establish the valuation of the properties in that district at the time you establish the district. Then you can only intercept the taxes that are made based upon increased valuations. So one of the things that was done back in 93 was this district right here was the Land of Lakes building that at that time was starting to end production. So the concern from the city when they established the district was that property value is going to go down, that would end up eating the ability of having taxes to help subsidize putting in streets, so that was ignored. It was kept out of the district. A lot of this other property in the commercial area was not included in the commercial district specifically because of concern where the tax values would go up and go down. Okay, since that point in time, legislature has come up with a new method called a commercial tax abatement program. But to do a tax abatement on a new commercial property, you have to have the property in a commercial urban revitalization district. We had a local business owner that's associated with the property in S M1, the old land of lakes, and said, hey, I want to put up a new building and I would like a tax abatement. We checked with attorneys, checked with the county, county says, you don't have a district, you've got to establish a district. So that was the start of that. The other advantage of this new program for tax abatement is that if somebody were to have a commercial building and improve it, expand it, renovate it, improve it, and the property tax value, property tax value goes up, they could also ask for an abatement just of the increase. So if somebody's paying a $10,000 property tax bill on a $200,000 commercial building and they move it up to 400,000, instead of paying that double tax bill, they could ask for an abatement. If, and again, it's to council approval and has to be within that district. A tax abatement now is predominantly three years of 100% of the increased taxes, or they can elect to say 80%, then decreasing to 70, 60, 50, 40, 30, 20 over an eight-year period, I think, eight or 10-year period. So what the notifications that I think the most of you are here for is what's the impact to you if you're a resident or if you're a commercial? If you're a commercial, basically what we decided, since we had to spend money to create a district and we didn't want to target one business, we said, okay, let's basically take that district, Downdale Drive, out to 63, to the end of Hudson, back down on Dale Road, come in here and include the commercial district. Now, within the commercial district, there's going to be some of you that might have a residence within sight of that. Okay? So you were included in this notification because you're in there and we didn't want to go through a legal description of jogging on every single house. So it was from an economical standpoint, we made the district, but the district itself is commercial. So what our hearing is tonight is to see if anybody has objections to it, get input, and then decide from the council's perspective whether to approve this phase, and that brings us to a final phase, which is 30 more days for a final hearing to then have the whole district established.
It allows us to incentivize commercial businesses to either come to Hudson or expand in Hudson and keep them here, but doesn't have to, we don't have to approve those either. It's individually counseled, but it allows us the opportunity to provide some of the same incentives that they're offering in other neighboring communities or other places out throughout Iowa to help us try to encourage some more commercial businesses in places that we feel it's the correct fit. It's not saying that we're going to stick a commercial building in next door to anybody's house and say you can build a huge commercial building right next door. It's definitely, but it's just the entire targeted area that has...
And it's also our feeling from the council perspective, and I speak for the majority of the council, is that we don't want to have a tax abatement or other type of opportunity only for somebody new coming to the community. We want to be able to also provide assistance to local businesses that are already here. And this gives us that tool. So with that, I'll open the public hearing and then we can get into general comments and questions.
You've got to approve the agenda first.
Okay. Motion approved agenda please?
None of that counts, go do it again.
No, no. It's on film, you can replay it.
Yeah.
Do you have a motion approved?
Moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now, I'll open the public hearing on the proposed designation of the 2019 Hudson Commercial Urban Revitalization Area. First Chrissy, are there any written comments?
No.
Okay, floor is open. If anybody feels that this is already answered by the questions from my preference, you don't have to stick around for the whole meeting. You're welcome to leave or ask questions or stick around until we get through this thing.
Yeah, hi.
And your name?
My name is Rick Rudin.
Okay, Richard.
I live over in those condos you were talking about. I guess the question, I never had this until I got here and I saw your explanation, is you're putting residential property inside your commercial district for...
We're putting it inside of an urban, a commercial urban revitalization area, but it does not affect the zoning that you're in?
That was my question.
So that does not override that?
That's my question.
Good question. Any other questions or comments? Yep.
Robert, you're at home.
Yep.
Unlegally.
Doc.
Yeah, my question is, okay, you said it doesn't impact my residential property, however, when you are making these abatements, will the taxes from my residential property be diverted from the abatement?
No, no divertment. All it will do is if a person's commercial property tax bill for their new building or improvement is going to go up to $1,000, usually about a fourth of that is city, fourth of its county, half of its school. Basically, if we grant an abatement, the county says, you have no bill. So it simply has no additional taxes for that period of the abatement, be it three years or up to eight. Does not affect you at all.
No, no, I knew it didn't increase the tax. Well, I was wondering, are my taxes going into the general fund under that or are they going into the TIF for these abatements?
They would be general fund.
They're going into the general fund.
Okay, and that wouldn't be impacted on a residential property listed within here?
Correct.
Right.
Any others? Yep.
Sorry.
Nope, nope, that's what these are for.
Absolutely.
And I like to have attendance, it's interesting, but it's always...
So the question about the taxes is, if the city makes improvements to the commercial property in order to, which is very common these days, to enhance a business moving into their area, the abatement that you were talking about on the taxes would apply to the individuals, companies, whatever, that are building, okay? The improvements that the city would make...
But the city will not make an improvement to a commercial business.
Even, I'm talking about streets, sewer?
Streets, infrastructure, that's different, yes. We can, we can use, let me put it this way. Usually what will do in a commercial district or residential TIF district is we can use TIF funds to do infrastructure or rebates to developers. So if we feel that there's a development of residential, that we need to extend a street and there's a purpose to extend a street, we could put that into a TIF district, intercept those taxes. Developer or the developer or homeowner would still have to pay their taxes, it's just that we're allowed to keep what normally would go to the county to help pay for the putting in of the streets.
Yeah, I guess my question is, is if you're taking money from the city, whatever fund you want to call it, I mean, I understand the...
Yep.
And, and, I used to work for schools, and you improve this street, sewer, whatever, build a new fire station because they got a chemical plant now, does it affect the amount, I mean, the cost to the city is going to go up, is that going to be, is that going to impact his taxes?
No, it should not.
Should not?
Will not.
It won't because we're taxes.
Shell's a good word, thank you.
I understand. Lots of times the mayes are a lot better than wills.
I understand.
I understand that. Will not. Anything else?
Jane Wagner. Having residential properties inside of a TIF district, does that in any way decrease or could it increase the value of homes that are in that area?
I would say no, from a standpoint that if you're in the middle of the district, if anything, from a, say, commercial, it's your concern about a residential being in this district beside of a commercial.
It doesn't change the zoning.
That's a matter of opinion.
Yeah, but it doesn't change the zoning, so you can't have, it's not like you're going to have...
They can't put, can't not put a commercial in a residential zoned area.
No, so yeah, because your home where you're at, over there back behind Casey's, right, in that neighborhood, is zoned residential, and in order to have a commercial building, there would have to be a progression with what's in the, yeah, the future land use map to where the commercial is even allowed to be at. And there's a buffer that we have to go through in between. You can't have a heavy density of reindustrializing right next to a housing district, you know, a zone in that, and it would have to come before Chamber and everything else to even get that way.
Yeah, because you're right in here, correct? Again, the zoning is the critical factor of where that property is. So the fact that we have a commercial urban revitalization of, which includes ag ground too, does not affect what can be in there or what can join in because can somebody improve Doc Slinky's office there? Yeah, but that's in that commercial district. So that would be the thing, is if Doc Slinky expand, and he hasn't talked to me about expanding, but if, as an example, if he were to double the size of his building, that would double his property value, double his tax bill. That's the particular type of application that we could use this as an incentive if he came to us and said, hey, I'd like to do this, but I really need some help on property taxes for three years.
But you have people on that street who are on opposite ends that are next to open fields, so you're proposing that if you put in a street, and because we're falling in that area, does that mean that someone on either end of that could be sitting next to Casey's too? Or something that could...
What you're saying is, could it be a commercial zone right next to the residential in that open ag land?
And therefore impact our home value?
Not based on this.
Not based upon this action.
Based on a whole nother process, like...
They'd have to change the zoning?
Yeah, you have to change zoning. This has nothing to do with zoning, this is more, this is a tax district, and then there's a zoning map behind you that says this is going to be residential, this is going to be commercial, this is going to be agricultural. So yes, it could, but you would have this happening right now, you would have a whole council meeting, I mean, it would be a huge...
This doesn't affect that.
Let me say it like this, can I, I think what I would say is that could happen right now, and it could happen after this. This doesn't affect, I mean, I don't think anyone's interested in that happening right now. My point is, turning this into a TIF district or not, does it prevent or allow that? That possibility is there as we sit right now, because if somebody bought that piece of ag land and wanted to put in the application to change the zoning to commercial and put something up, there would be a process they would go through and that could feasibly happen, but I don't, you would be in here along with all your neighbors saying, we don't want that and we probably wouldn't do that.
We were here last two years ago, filed some commercial, large apartment buildings.
The apartment, yeah.
So that's just a concern.
Remember, the zoning was already there for that, it was a challenge to...
It was already zoned to have those apartments there, is what you're saying.
So you objected when they didn't build them, right?
Why, they're not built long.
Anything else?
Doc? Yeah, I just want clarification, something I said earlier. If I understood it right, is if you had 22 extra legal pages, you would in essence would have carved out all the residential properties out of the same eight. Is that what I understood correctly?
In 22 extra days to do that.
I made up the number.
And $20,000 to wait to do it.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Right. Yeah, it's not our intent at all to put an industrial building next door to a house. That is not the intent of this. It's the intent to give us the tools to be able to try and continue to grow our community with commercial businesses as well, as long as they do fit in the right spots. Now, the other thing, as a council member, that I get concerned with are looking at our competing businesses too. Do I want to bring a Fairway in when we've got Randalls in town? Absolutely not, that's not our goal, to be looking to draw anyone out of these current places, but I think it's important for our tax people and for our town, you know, we've got Homes Welding that could very easily have picked up and gone somewhere else and done that, but can we have tools to help them expand if they want to stay here and help them to do that, or to bring in even, you know, the Northern Tier section with DNW floor covering, PK Midwest out there in our district? Do you guys want to expand? We'd love to be able to help you do that and keep you in our community and in our tax base, you know? I think that's important to our town, to continue to grow just like it is, to continue to attract new families, to continue to attract people that want to live here. You know, it's the work, live, play thing to me, and that's what we really want to try to do, is not only help bring new people in, we don't want to stay stagnant because then our town moves away, and that's not what we're willing to do, but this is a tool that can help us to attract some of those new businesses when it's the right fit and when, you know, we have the right processes. This is just the first step in that process to help do that.
Anything else?
Is the end of that Charlotte Road?
This up here?
Should be. Up high.
Up here?
What road is that?
Well, this is Eldora, this is Sergeant Road.
That's not a road there.
It's not a road, it's just a, it's a city limit.
Basically the back end, a little past the back end.
This is Les Orange, this is Ackerman, that helps you know?
Right at Wes's house, right?
There you go. Where that city limit sign is.
Matt Piffkin with PK Midwest, and what I'm here for is just to ask, what sort of improvements is the city looking for out of a business like ours that would qualify for the abatement?
It'd be an improvement that increases your tax, your tax base assessment. So if you're assessed at 600,000, if you have improvements that Jack set up to 900,000, yeah, we would consider that. Because basically that's kind of indication that you're expanding your business, either it's employment or actual property tax bill.
Sure.
So that's the type of thing.
Okay.
Six million dollars.
Yeah, if you want to go six million, you can.
Yeah, I mean, my question's more based on, are you looking for new buildings, you know?
Well, the best advantage, in a TIF, in a strict TIF environment, under those laws, it had to be new construction. In this new urban revitalization law, we now can give an abatement, and abatement can be on improvements, it does not have to be a new building. So Randalls could expand their building and we could give tax abatement on the increased tax base.
So like the stuff that Homes Welding just got done doing, had this been done already, they could have asked for, or even...
So that's why we went to the wide expansion, because the target for commercial would be Downdale Drive, down 63 predominantly. Is there going to be somewhere else? Yeah, but we thought, while we're doing it, we might as well have it so the downtown businesses would have an opportunity.
George, would you say a couple words about, we're already kind of offering a similar to this in the Northern Tier?
Yeah, it'd be the same type of thing in the Northern Tier, but they're in a tax, in a TIF district.
Where you have to have new construction.
Has to be new construction.
The point is, is I think one thing Kay said earlier was, like other towns are doing, well, we're already doing a similar thing to this, to spur on...
It's a tool that follows my philosophy in city management. I don't feel Hudson should ever be a waterloo Cedar Falls, buy, go out, buy ground, be speculative and hope something happens. I'm unwilling to do that in my desk, or, you know, if it were to come to that, I would veto something, because I don't feel that we should be in a risk scenario, but I am willing to give back a portion of what either a new or existing commercial developer, residential developers will want to do, because that sets us up for the future years.
And I, I mean, everyone probably understands this, but it's a, we're not giving anyone money, it's just that we're not collecting money for a period of time.
To help them get off the ground.
And then when it's time to carve money, we will go to...
We're collecting.
Anything else?
Marcus Weaver. So for the residents that are in the commercial zone or that are a part of this urban renewal, what if they want to do some improvements, do they also have that option to get a tax payment?
Not just this. Nope, because this is just commercial. We'll have to keep looking and see if something comes up through the state legislature to be able to do the same thing for, you know, and I don't know how that would be administered, that's a tough step, that's...
There are some programs that are out there with that, depending on what type of things that you're doing, and there's a whole little, a whole nother thing, if you actually went out and researched into it, there's like historical home grants through the REAP foundation, through the state, that does do some of those, if it's historical value type of residences, and they do even individual homes, I've always thought about that, there's some really cool old houses in this town that would be really interesting to save, you know, but it takes money to do that, but there are programs out there, you just have to find them. I've been to a couple of the REAP congresses that are really kind of funded.
I would guess your house might qualify for one of those actually.
But REAP is what it is, it's a state thing, and they absolutely have those. So look into that.
Anything else?
Sorry. Don't be sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, he's going after another spot.
This thing, well, I'm trying to put it in the context of what we're talking about, but anyway, does this fall under a TIF district now?
That is in TIF district now.
Okay.
For residential.
Okay, but this is not included in the, in the new thing, so this is not on the agenda for tonight.
Correct.
So if I want to ask questions about that, I'll wait till later. Thank you.
Or come on in, let Chrissy know and she can, or give me a call, my cards are out there and you can set up time, I'd be delighted to visit with you.
Okay, thank you.
Can I have you clarify what would be the advantages of having the residential portions carved out, even though I know it costs you more money? What, what, why would that be worthwhile, or what, who does it add value to? City is a cross, is it, how's it work?
I don't know that it adds value to anything.
On this, for an urban revitalization, that's what, it really doesn't impact a residence at all.
Well, and the legal description has to be things, you cannot carve, you can't carve out differences.
Yeah, it has to be lines, they can jog, but it has to be a line that starts at one end and ends at the other. I would not be able to say have one house and leave that sitting in the middle, because that creates an island and the state just does not like islands, either inside or outside of stuff. Okay?
I think our last, correct me if I'm wrong, our last urban revitalization though, was just the downtown area, and then we couldn't put Dale Drive with it because there was a swath in the middle, I think?
I don't remember why, I think that was...
And it was like split up, so we couldn't do both of them together, but when we encompass everything, then we can't, it was just not set up that way back in the 80s or 90s when they did the downtown to try to do all the streetscapes out here. They only put that portion in, and then we had to go back and add to the rest of it. Well, why not just add the whole thing while you're doing it, so that we don't have to go back and spend the $20,000 to do it again, you know, but it still gives us, again, it's not a, it's not a rubber stamp to say that you can build whatever you want, wherever you want, because the zoning law is still overriding any of that. It's simply a tool that allows us to be able to look for those options too. But it does not affect any commercial or any residential neighborhoods, we, they're not going, they can't put a green bin silo manufacturing place next door to my house because I would be thrown for it too. I don't, I mean, you just don't want that obvious. You see towns, everybody's going through towns where there's like a business here and then houses, and then another business, and it just doesn't make cohesive sense. And that's not what anybody, I think, is looking at this level to do, to disrupt anything like that. It just allows us the opportunity to help incoming businesses, which I think we all probably agree, that, you know, back in the day when I was a kid and we had a grocery, we had, Randalls has still been there, but we had a pharmacy and we had a hardware store and we had all these things, it's really hard to attract new businesses to come in and put money into something that they're just not going to do without having some of these tools available to do it now, because somebody else will offer it to them, you know?
Anything else?
Jim Graham. We live on Hudson at the southern end and our backyard joins a field. In 2000, oh, I don't remember just what year it was, but anyway, some of that field at the southern end flooded along with lack of creek. How does that threat affect zoning, decision making, et cetera?
The only thing, it really doesn't affect, does not directly affect zoning decisions, what it does require is, and of course, they redo flood maps a whole lot and everything, the flood zone is expanding as you know. The main requirement is that if somebody is to build in what's defined as a flood zone, and we've got maps that show, I know some of it comes across 63, is if they build anything in that area, the bottom of their building has to be at least one foot above that flood zone, so it requires that to go up. But otherwise, there's no specific impact on zoning, this definitely does not have any impact on flood situations. Anything else? About close the public hearing? General Government, Hudson City Council maintains the right to waive the first and second readings of the ordinance presented and may pass the third and final reading of the same ordinance within the same council meeting. Item A, discussion action to approve Resolution 2526, Resolution stating the intentions of the City Council with regard to the designation of the 2019 Hudson Commercial Urban Revitalization Area and the proposed plan thereof, which is exactly what we had the public hearing for.
Some of. Second.
Discussion.
One question, do we? Does this go through, this is, it's a resolution.
This is a resolution.
Okay, go ahead.
Roll call.
Engel?
Aye.
Funs?
Aye.
Reister?
Aye.
Wyatt?
Aye.
Pass is five zero. You're welcome to stick around for the rest of the meeting or head out, we can get through disruptions. Item B, discussion action to waive the first and second readings and approve the third reading of ordinance 823 and ordinance as of the end of the area of Hudson Island as the 2019 Hudson Commercial Urban Renewal Revitalization Area. This is the ordinance now, the reason for us to stay on track.
One second, if anybody wants to, the police chief is downstairs meeting and greeting people, if you want to stop by and say hello to our new police chief.
With his wife and two kids.
With his wife and two kids.
But we've never heard.
Sorry, thank you.
And requesting first a motion to waive the first and second readings, and this is a legal son track.
Someone to waive the first and second?
Second.
Discussion.
We said keep it on track.
It's all, this is, this was, we established this, this meeting to get that 30-day first phase timeframe, and then we have to have the necessity for that ordinance to go into this next 30 days to then get everything ready for stone.
So if we don't waive this, what happens?
He can't hold this year.
Okay.
Good question though.
I don't like waiving stuff. I will in this case.
This is the one we're working, we've been working with him because of expedite and stuff. Any other comments? Roll call.
Wyatt?
Aye.
Funs?
Aye.
Stabell?
Reister?
Yeah.
Engel?
Aye.
Yeah, sorry, pretty far. Long week. Yeah, thank goodness it's Friday, almost Friday.
Okay, five zero, now may have a motion to approve the third reading of ordinance 823.
Second.